Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Audra, can you have the record show that tonight is Tuesday, November 12? Our city attorney is present, our city planners present, our city engineers present, council member Dunlap is present, council member Gady is absent, council member Dahl is present, council member Morris is present, our assistant city administrator and our city administrators present. At this time, I ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item this evening is our open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, state your name and address and let comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time? We will close the open forum and move on to item two to consider agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
On the consent agenda, I'd like to bring down item three dot seven.
Okay.
Could we make that five point zero? I have to talk about it before the fire station.
Would you like to move it to five point one and we move five point one to five point two?
If that's not too difficult, yeah.
It makes more sense.
Okay.
All right. All right. Any other changes? A motion would be in order then?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda, a motion would be in order and noted that an item was pulled down.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ryan.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item four point one, this is the item that Audra had on the desk for all of you. General election. I'll turn this over to Audra.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, before you have a resolution, consider the canvassing of the 2024 election results for the city. And just as some points of interest, we had thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven voters vote. Of that, six thousand, two hundred and ninety voted early. So that actually meant about forty-five hundred people came through City Hall into our little kitchen in those three weeks leading up to the elections. So just some information there. Ninety percent of the voters voted of the fifteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven that were registered. And looking at three results, the winner of the mayoral race was Jessica Stotkamp with six thousand, one hundred and seven votes. And the council candidate winners were Michelle Lund with three thousand, five hundred and nineteen votes and Cory Tanner with three thousand, three hundred and sixty-two votes. And if you agree with these results, I also have a form that I need to have you all sign as canvassing the election results.
Any questions?
Do you think that we could maybe have those in the last class, just the exact numbers that you just reviewed?
I certainly could give you some of those statistics.
TC would like to see that.
All right.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ryan.
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-two to canvas the results of the city election held Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item five point one, which is approved fire protection agreement with the city of Albertville.
Madam Mayor, from the Albertville's packet in their meeting, the summary of their meeting between the two cities had a statement that was troubling. It said that while Atsigo is still working on the operational pieces of the department, it is their intention that they will be able to provide emergency response without supplemental service contracts all of Atsigo. My concern here is twofold. I don't recall the council making that kind of a decision, and it seems to me like this would be a decision made at the council level. It's not an operational decision. And two, if this is the message that we are sending, we are telling the other cities that we won't need their help, and that's inconsistent with what has been said by the mayor and other council members. So I'm hoping to get some clarification on that.
Staff?
Which, which piece?
That we are going to forego any service contracts in the future.
Mayor, I don't think that's been set in stone by the city council. The city has not yet hired staffing of either model, whether that is a duty crew paid on call members or some combination thereof. So that is something that the city council needs to set in stone. We move through the next two years of department development. I do think with the plan that was presented by Chief Roush back to the Public Safety Commission and City Council in March of this year, there was a staffing model presented that we at the staff level believe that can achieve providing service to the community without those supplemental contracts. That doesn't mean that there will be no assistance requested in the form of automatic or mutual aid, and those are things that the city staff, chief, and I need to work through with those communities.
And Ryan, you're referring to, I'm sorry, you said that was the memo from Albertville.
Yeah, their summary of the meeting that the two cities had.
Okay.
So it seems like maybe their summary was not complete because we have not taken that off the table.
But that's not our statement. That's their statement.
Sure.
That is correct. The council has made no staffing decisions in terms of how this department will operate, but focus throughout twenty twenty-four has been on facility itself.
Okay. With that, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the fire protection agreement between the city of Albertville and the city of Atsigo.
Second. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item five point two, Fire and Emergency Services Station Project, Daryl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening to talk about the bidding process for the emergency services facility. A little bit of history, just to catch everybody up to make sure that we're all at the same place here. This project has been discussed for decades and incremental steps have been made throughout that time period, including purchasing property in two thousand and seven and again in two thousand and nineteen. There's been multiple studies that have been completed. Two thousand and sixteen, study with Albertville and Atsigo Shared Fire Services Study. Two thousand and seventeen, Elk River Fire Station Feasibility and Facility Study. Two thousand and eighteen, the final report, our response time improvement fire service model, and then in two thousand and twenty-two, Fire and Emergency Services Facts and Finding. Each of these studies discuss multiple options for providing fire protection for the city of Atsigo. Each of those studies included an option for a facility within the facility, in the community to help improve response times and service to the community. With that, in November of two thousand and twenty-two, the city council elected to move forward with establishing its own department of the different options that were provided and led to my hiring in two thousand and twenty-three, and we've been working towards bringing the facility to reality since that time. As the city administrator said, two thousand and twenty-four has been dedicated largely to development of the facility itself. Do you remember in two thousand and twenty-three, we ordered some apparatus based on lead times that were present at the time? Since then, we've been working on the facility. So we started out very early in the process, we started talking about what the needs were going to be for the facility. We did an initial needs assessment, which was a comprehensive review of what type of facility would be needed based on the staffing models that have been presented in multiple presentations. That led to deciding on architect to help with the process. We did a request for proposals. We reviewed those proposals, did interviews and presentations, and we did site visits to six different stations. In the end, we selected walled architects and engineers to help us with the design, and they have been participating since that time. We also had a core planning group that was formed, included city staff, architects, project managers to make sure that we were considering all the different elements. We took a lot of the information that we gained from the site visits and the comments that the city council made. Incorporated those into our initial design. Along the same time, we decided that we needed to hire a construction manager to help with that process. Klaus Anderson was hired to help with that process. So Klaus Anderson of all has helped with the design and estimating for the project, ultimately bidding for the project. So we started out with the steps of the project here, the initial estimate based on the square footage, based on previous information that the construction management company had seen from other projects. Came up with an initial estimate of somewhere between nineteen and a half and twenty-two million dollars. We refined that a bit at our midpoint of the project. We had nailed that number down a little closer to around twenty-one million dollars. And finally, we got to the final estimate and the project was put out for bid, and the bids were competitively released and reviewed. I'm going to have Mike Phillips from across from up and talk about that in just a few minutes. So there was a formal bid process, bid review and selection done by Klaus Anderson and through the twenty-eight scopes of work, and we accepted the low bidder for all of the scopes of work with one exception because we had a whisker all after the bids were accepted. So I'm going to ask Mike to come up. We've got just a few slides that Mike's going to look at or show you to talk a little bit about the bid and what the costs are at this point. Don't like.
Thanks, Daryl. Mayor and Council, thank you for having me back again to present some information as Daryl just mentioned on our bid date update. Appreciate the opportunity to be back and speak with all of you. So as Daryl mentioned, a quick update on bid day overview. I'm going to review the alternates with you guys and then discuss briefly next steps. Adam, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide for me. So as Daryl mentioned, we package the work in what we refer to as work scopes or bid packages, and what that is, it's a way to put together the work across a project and scopes that contractors would find enticing to bid on. And so it's a little bit tough to see on the table to the right, but that's our twenty-eight scopes of work. They include things such as concrete, masonry, precast, steel, roofing, mechanical, electrical, and so on. On those twenty-eight scopes of work, we received a hundred and eighty-five bids. And without context, that's a little tough to understand. On a typical bid day for a project of this size and this type, we would expect anywhere between three to four bids per work scope. So that would put you in a range of about ninety to a hundred and twenty roughly bids. The bid day for Atsigo back on the twenty-ninth was unlike anything we've seen in recent memory within Klaus Anderson. We averaged north of six and a half bids per scope to get to the hundred and eighty-five. What that says is we truly have the right number for Atsigo. And a number, quite frankly, if we were to put it back on the street again next week, we're not going to see the same, the same value. This is a number where everything aligned on bid day from influencing the coverage in terms of making calls to prospective bidders, generating that interest within the market and having those bidders turn out on bid day and ultimately provide a real value to the city. The next line item, low bid. So as Daryl mentioned, we did take the low bid or accept the low bid on each of the twenty-eight work scope, with the exception of the landscaping work scope. As I mentioned at the bottom of the post-bid interviews, after bid day, that's when work continues for us. We're reaching out to both the low bid and second low bid, making sure that they have everything, scope, schedule, all of the individual components within that. So that we make a recommendation to you as you guys have in your packet tonight. We're confident in what that number is. That low bid, fourteen percent under our estimate, rough numbers. Our estimate at the CD stage was about sixteen point four million. That was just construction cost. That included some construction contingency as well as general conditions items. When we estimate, and I've mentioned this before, we do not estimate to the low bit of the market because there is some fluctuation that you can see on bid day. What our goal is, is we want to estimate to the midpoint of the market or the average that we see. That's the fourth line item there, the average bid within two percent of estimate. What that equates to in dollars is our CD estimate was within about three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars of the estimate that we put together. What that shows you or what that shows me is that the competition of those hundred and eighty-five bids, that competition drove that price down, and the city of Atsigo benefited by seeing the low bid be cut, excuse me, the low bid being fourteen percent under that average estimate. I think we can go to the next slide, Adam.
Mayor, before we leave the slide, I realized the screen is hard to view. So the low bid, the total on that, just for the record, is fourteen million, eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars for that. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Adam.
It's fine, Dar.
Yeah, if you can't see that number.
It was not viewable by the public. I mean, that was a slide, but there was, you can't read that small print.
Adam, can you repeat the number again for the audience? Thank you.
Yes, for the record again. Fourteen million, eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Thank you.
Not included in that low bid number that Adam just read, there were three alternates on bid day that revolved around two items. One was a price of what would, what would the city see back in a credit or a deduct if we were to eliminate the sixth apparatus bay? And then along with that, alternate two A and two B were to deduct the four-fold doors on just bays one through five, if we were to deduct the sixth bay. Or, yeah, if we were to deduct the sixth bay, and then if we were to deduct four-fold doors on all of the bays, including the sixth, what would that breakout be if we were to go to just a traditional garage door style in the four-fold? So alternate one, deduct to the sixth apparatus bay, the deduct alternate total, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eighty-five dollars. Again, for context, whenever you do a deduct alternate, you don't see a full dollar-for-dollar credit. Typically, you would expect to be somewhere in the range of about eighty percent plus or minus on a deduct alternate. That two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars is approximately somewhere between fifty to fifty-five percent of what the value would be to actually build the sixth bay. So you're seeing less than what you would typically see. And part of that is driven by the competition and how tight the numbers were on bid day that there wasn't an appetite to give back a higher credit on that deduct alternate. Alternate two A, this is a little bit closer to the real value. The deduct for the four-fold doors on bays one through five, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. And alternate two B, the deduct for the four-fold door, excuse me, on just bay six is forty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. So if council were to so choose, any one of, well, a combination of those alternates could be picked up, and those reductions would be taken off of the low bid number that Adam read on the prior slide. And that's included in your council packet on the letter of recommendation. Let me go ahead and go to the next slide if there's no questions on alternates. So next steps for us, assuming that the projects were to move forward, the next steps will be moving into contract issuance. So I think as we've talked about before, at a high level, the city would enter into an AIA one thirty-two. That's the associated contract to the one that the council had previously approved for Klaus Anderson, which is the C one thirty-two contract. From there, we would work with the individual prime contractors on submittal development and material procurement. And then lastly, we would work with the city and WOLD to work through plan review and permitting. Any questions? Hey. Adam, if you could go to the next slide. And then the last slide here is the request for council action to move the project forward to the next step.
I do have one question. You said that we had one withdrawal.
Yes.
Why?
So the landscape contractor missed two items that were clearly noted, both in the project specifications and within their work scope. The first item that they missed was the planting soils or the specialized soils for the planting beds and landscape beds. They did not carry that. They incorrectly assumed that that was going to be carried by the earthwork contractor, even though it was in their back that was assigned to them. And the second item that they missed was the site fencing, both around the generator and transformer pads as well as the, the trash enclosure. They assumed as well that that would be covered underneath the earthwork package, again, was specified in their scope and spec, but did not carry it. And that's the point of our post-bid interview calls that go through to make sure that every contractor has what they should have. And if we identify things that they have that they don't, well, we can work with them post-contract issuance to bring those dollars back. We did not find anything where people carried things that they should not have, but that was the one contractor that missed two items.
Okay. So that was originally the low bidder and then?
Yep. So then we moved to the second low bid, correct, which I believe is green scapes, if my research correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, questions?
Can you? Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Can you explain some of the scenarios where the alternate was a reduction, but they actually have positive numbers?
Yep. Good, good question. So that's again part of the post-bid process. As you and council member Dunlap, as you pointed out, on the actual bid form that we receive from contractors, some contractors provided a deduct for the deduct alternate or a negative value, while some contractors provided a positive value within that. It's an interpretation of the bidding documents. When we talked to them through the post-bid interview process, those that provided a positive value thought that they were supposed to provide a positive value for a deduct alternate, which that's, that's not an industry standard, I would say, of how you're supposed to provide a number. It's supposed to be a deduct or a negative number if you're giving a credit and vice versa. If it's, if it's an add, I will point out that in regards to the removal of the overhead doors or the four-fold doors, rather, the steel numbers within there, for an example, they did provide an add, and that truly is an add because there's some additional framing or structural framing that's required for those openings with or without a door. So we did go through and actually clarify that with all of the low bidders so that if an alternate were picked up, that we would know truly what the right value is. And quite frankly, we would work through that, through the change order process post-contract. And so we've confirmed the, the, the correct value, I'll say, for each of those alternates.
And so then the correct value is actually reflected in our?
The correct value is reflected on that slide because I can't change, we can't change the bid tabs.
They put in?
The bid tabs are what they are, and that's not reflective of what the value is on our slide. The slide is the confirmed deduct values based on our post-bid interview calls.
Okay.
Great question.
And then in the cases where there's basically, where there's zero, I'm assuming that's just because either it's not applicable or they weren't willing to provide a deduct.
Yep, yep. So I think the one that I would point out, it was on the earthwork contract. If you deducted the sixth bay, I think they gave a deduct of approximately seven hundred dollars. It's clearly worth more than seven hundred dollars to not have to do the earthwork associated with that section, but that's the, the credit that that contractor was willing to provide for that work. And part of that is how they go after the bid, should an alternate be selected or not, on how they want to prioritize, excuse me, how they want to prioritize the dollars to be as competitive as they can.
Okay.
Which is gets back to the point that I mentioned earlier, where you're not seeing nearly eighty percent of the value come back in that credit.
Right.
Good question.
All right, other questions? Well, I'm glad that a hundred and eighty-five bidders were willing to come out and bid on this project.
Yeah.
Exciting for you guys and a really long day to go through all those bids.
It was, it was a long afternoon, but it was well worth it.
It's only the timing is right for planning, right? So everybody came down.
Yeah, absolutely.
Plan for next year.
Yep.
Awesome.
And have you? Obviously, at the city, we always ask, like, have we worked with this contractor before? Have you worked with all of the contractors that have bid?
I personally have worked with all of them. Klaus Anderson has worked with ninety-five plus percent of those contractors.
Okay. Were there ones that were low bidders that no one's worked with, that you had to do a little bit more investigation into these people to make sure that they're going to be able to do the scope of work that we're looking for or the quality that you guys expect?
No, the only, if there's, if there's a bidder that, for example, I'm not familiar with, or, or the, the project manager will be running this project, his name is Ben Albrecht, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight. But if we do run into a contractor that we're not familiar with, we've got a pretty solid resource internally of project managers that have worked a variety of projects, whether it be fire station or public safety of other entity. So we'll reach out to those folks and ask them. Greenscapes is one, for example, to go back to them that I had not worked with or heard of. So we actually reached out to a few folks within our office, as well as some external partners as well to get some information. I guess to answer the question maybe a little bit differently, there's nobody that's on the letter of recommendation that has any concern to us. If there was, we would bring that up and talk through that before we would compile that letter.
Okay. Well, obviously, Greenscapes is a local company on Elk River.
Yep. Yeah, and unfortunately, I seen on the way over, I think Midwest Landscape, who was the original low, they actually have a signed local too for an adopted highway. So both, both local, it appears.
Yeah, yeah. Midwest is right here in Atsigo.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Does a motion would be in order?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-three, accepting bids and awarding contracts for the fire and emergency services building project and to authorize the city attorney and Klaus Anderson to prepare the AIA A one three-two dash twenty nineteen contracts and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the finalized agreements.
Second. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
To understand why this decision should not move forward, you first have to understand this isn't just about the purchase of a fire station. This is about the push for Atsigo to go out alone and start her own fire department. An independent third-party analysis told us that this plan to start from scratch and create a department with a career staffing model was not in the best financial interests of our community, and on that, I agree. It went on to say that the contract fire departments all have firefighters that live and work close to those stations. Albertville firefighters live within an average of thirty seconds of the station. We practically have duty crews as it is. Plus, we have the added benefit that those stations exist close to our borders where the majority of the population is. Atsigo, on the other hand, will not have firefighters that live close to where the station will be. We don't have places for them to work during the day. So instead, we're going to pay for a more expensive and wasteful duty crew to sit at the station and do nothing for ninety-six percent of the time. This is why the fire study recommended keeping the contracts and building a substation for Albertville to operate and manage once the metrics supported such an endeavor. The draft results of the fire study were presented to the fire chiefs, and they provided their feedback. We modified the fire response areas to improve response times based on the capabilities of each department. We purchased property to one day become a substation for Albertville. We even asked the Albertville Fire Chief to help us with the layout. We even asked the Albertville Fire Chief to help us with the layout of that station. However, after the draft report was reviewed with the fire chiefs, a member of the council requested some additional analysis. From the fire study, quote, "It was requested by a member of the city council that two specific locations be evaluated based on the current street network." And that these scenarios exclude the effect of the current closest fire station partners. In other words, what would happen if we cancel the contracts and put a station in the middle of our city? I now know who that council member was that requested that we examine canceling the contracts. It was the mayor. The authors of the independent third-party study took the opportunity to remind anyone that might read this report in the future. That such an analysis went against their findings. Quote, "The draft report indicated that currently the fire service partners are performing within national guidelines." "It also indicated that currently there is no need for a fire station. But that in the expected future, fire stations are anticipated to become necessary due to development and population growth," end quote. The study concluded that those stations should be operated and managed by our contract partners. We have completely ignored the results of the study and went full steam ahead with a plan to put a station in the middle of our city and cancel the contracts. A plan that makes no sense. A plan that the study said resulted in the poorest performance of all the scenarios they examined. It also happens to be the most expensive plan. The mayor wants a fire department. The mayor will get a fire department. But make no mistake, this was not a data-driven decision. We have ignored the third-party independent study because it doesn't matter how much it costs. It doesn't matter if it actually improves service to our city. All that matters is that we have trucks with our logo on the side. The contracts with our neighboring cities provide better service at a price point that is cost efficient for the taxpayer. This plan is a waste of taxpayer resources and I will not be supporting it.
Madam Mayor, I also would like a fire station and a fire department and emergency services.
And Ryan, I will make a comment that I requested the, them to pull the numbers on the site when we knew that the property was available. So I'm the one that contacted them, but the full council wasn't agreeance to have that done. And I'm the one who, who made the call to say, run the numbers to see what this location looks like for us. That also only took into consideration that we would. When we looked at the, the data at that time, we weren't looking at a full-time staff being in that, in that model. So. I disagree with you on the fact that it keeps, that you keep saying that we were building this with Albertville. And I could tell you back then, we were, that same call came from the city of Elk River saying. Who's going to be running that department when you guys build it? Because the boundaries changed and the boundaries changed only for the fact that when we did the study, it said. Moving the lines made sense and having all of them respond to fires made more sense because. At certain times of the day, there's potentially more staff that are in Elk River or Rogers, vice versa from Albertville. And to your point, when you say firefighters potentially live thirty seconds from the fire station, it's because their city. Is three and a half square miles, if I'm mistaken. Does anyone know the exact? So, so to your point that. In fairness, that it's a very small city.
And we benefit from that.
Certain parts of our community at this time potentially benefit from that, but we need to make decisions based on our whole city. And I'm not the only one that thinks that we need a fire department. There's multiple residents out there that obviously support the existence of a fire. Department in our city for faster response times for our whole community. I'm not overriding anyone. We've done multiple studies. It's back up here at the council. All right.
We have a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Sorry. All right. We are moving on to city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything?
Quick, Mayor?
Yes.
Congratulations on another win and continuing to be our mayor. And congratulations to council members-elect Lund and council members-elect Tanner.
Thank you. I, I would like to look to Adra on this. Please extend a thank you to all the election judges. City staff, I know I sent an email, but I want to make it. Acknowledge you again this evening because you put in a lot of hours. And I thank you for all those hours, all the staff that came in. It really did take. All hands on deck to make sure that it ran as smoothly as it did. Having five precincts is no small feat also. So thank you for moving things in, moving things out. And you look refreshed, so. Again, thank you for, for all of that. Anyone else have anything for staff reports and updates? All right, moving on, or I'm sorry, that was city council reports update. Moving on to staff reports and updates. Sabrina?
Thank you, Mayor. No updates.
Adam?
Mayor, nothing further from you.
Adra?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do want to thank Deputy Clerk Kalen. She did an awesome job. We had some fabulous election specialists. We brought on three people that were. Trained to help us a little more in-depth than an election judge. We had also judges that came in that helped with the absentee voting and the direct balloting. Thank you to them. And then our head judges, election judges. All the city staff that pitched in from either answering phone calls or going to the county to pick up envelopes. We definitely could have done it without them. And then also to thank the, I'm going to say it wrong. Rob's last name. Snably?
Snably.
Snably, Snably and Lyndon Bell, Lyndon Bell'ser families for bringing in treats for the election judges. So they brought in some snacks. And then just to let you know, we were drawn today for the post-election review, which will be next Tuesday. So we'll have to bring in about nine judges to go to the county to recount three of the races. So that's all it gets.
You're the winner.
We were the winner.
Do you think it's because we're the largest city? Do they pick largest and smallest city to?
Mayor, it's actually completely random. They drop precinct out of a bowl.
Oh. Out of a bowl.
Yeah, out of a bowl. I've seen one, yay.
Thank you. Great, Dave?
No updates, thanks, Mayor.
Dan?
Mayor, no update.
Ron?
And I'll just give some updates on a few projects. We have a recon for Atsigo Creek restoration that's going to be tomorrow. So. That the creek front within Prairie Point, that portion will be starting construction soon. And then Zocman Meadows is still continuing to go on the Tanglewood development. And then the water treatment facility at pump house number Florida River National is ongoing. Awesome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Wright County Sheriff's Office?
Evening.
Good evening.
Just two points I wanted to touch on tonight. One is the election, day of election, we never, we didn't have any issues. So thank goodness, we never called by any of the election judges to resolve any conflicts. So. It was a very quiet day. Which we were thankful for. So and the other thing is, it is. Snowbird season or seasonal parking in Atsigo. So. But no snow is on the forecast as of right now. So.
And now you've said it.
Yeah.
So warnings will start trickling out slowly by our overnight staff. With usually it's typical, it just kind of trickles out. Hopefully the residents kind of get reminded that way. And then once again, snow is not kind of on the forecast, that's when they will usually kind of speed up the warnings and such. So. Or cite that there are particular people that don't care or something like that. So but and then obviously when it does snow, we'll. Be in full effect of writing the citations. So other than that, there's not much else to report. Any questions or comments?
Just looking to Adra and Adam or Sabrina, can we make sure we do a post about that, the seasonal parking?
Yes, I would highly advise that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Is it, do you sort of, isn't like an orange slip or something that you put on the car?
Yep. So we'll do an official CFS. So that's recorded, each warning is recorded in our system. So we can, if some, if the other side. Sees the same car, they can write a citation if they didn't get the message the first time. But yes, usually typically we leave an orange card that has the city of Atsigo on it. And that specifically says your parking violation of the seasonal. Seasonal snow, yeah, seasonal parking warning, excuse me. So.
Sure. But it's just a person with a warning.
Yeah.
Do a warning?
The orange is the warning.
Or yes, so I'm saying there's like a physical warning, a card, and then also recorded warning. That makes sense?
Okay.
We can articulate like, oh, this person has.
Been warned ten times.
Yes.
Okay. Making sure we're following along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If no one has anything, yes.
Does Daryl have anything?
Daryl, do you have anything?
Thank you. All right. And thank you for the action on the project. I would say that I understand that this project became very political. I will offer the current councils, the newly elected council members, or anybody from the public that wants to come and talk about the project, about the facility specifically. About the operational plan. Please reach out to me and happy to have one-on-one conversations to answer any questions that there may be. Provide information that may be misinterpreted or may have been missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No one has anything else and a motion would to adjourn would be in order?
Bill moved.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The meeting has ended. Thank you all for attending.